My posture's terrible. I used to walk around with my sticker bum in my side. I guess the posture.
It is six o'clock. I am going to call this meeting to order. And tonight, the Pledge of Allegiance will be given or led by a Boy Scout named Zaden Rue. If you would come forward, if the rest of you would stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to present you with this lapel pin with the official city insignia on it. Thank you for leading us into place tonight. Alderman Miller, would you give the invocation, please?
I'm glad, Lord, we've come to this with thank you for this day. And our Lord, we move forward the business for this city. We pray, Lord, that what we do be pleaded in our sight. And Lord, we thank you for the opportunity you have given each and every one to serve. Thank you, Lord, for ever, I swear, our soldier might be blessed, our men and women alike, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. We have all of the board members here tonight. Alderman Doc Harris is in Jackson, and he is joining us remotely. Can I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion passes. Item five is to approve the docket of claim numbers solicited on your agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Item six is to approve the minutes from the regular mayor and board of Alderman meeting on February 4th.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Item seven is the consent agenda. Can I have a motion on that?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion passes. Item eight is the donations docket. Can I have a motion on that?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Donation docket passes. Item nine is the personnel docket. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Personnel docket passes. Item 10 is the approval of the fiscal year 2023 audit, which will be presented by the Gerald Group and possibly Ed. So y'all have a copy. I know y'all were emailed the draft copy with your packet, so you all had time to peruse it if you wish. Y'all want to come up and present it? We're all ears.
Good evening. Once again, the City of Hernando has received an unmodified opinion. That's the best possible outcome from an audit of the financial statement. So once again, very excellent work there. And we're getting caught up. We're getting close. Twenty-four now is just all we have left to do, get y'all back on track. A lot of times, I've read through the last few years some detailed sections, but just keep in mind, the Management Discussion Analysis section on page nine really gives some great information that kind of summarizes the city's financial statements and kind of touches on a couple of the different accounting methods that are used for the fund statements as well as the proprietary statements. And then if you want to, I just want to point out a couple of things on the statement of net position, which is on page 19. And really, it's more of a reminder about the impact of that accounting standard that was done back in 2015, where you have to show the pension liability and various other factors that kind of go into that calculation. You'll see the impact there. This year, or for 2023, it's 31.9 million. And of course, that's from those calculations. The actuary actually gives us reports, or we get reports off the PERS website that has y'all's proportionate share of that pension liability. So we do some calculations, and that's what it comes out to be for the city. And that does fluctuate from year to year. Hopefully, it'll start going down as the PERS contributions go up by employees and employers. So hopefully, that'll come down over time. But that's what all municipalities have to, you know, have that calculation. The only other thing on that page that's a little different, it's been on there the last couple of years, but the unearned revenue, about halfway down for 2023, that's 2.9 million, or almost 2.9 million. And that's related to the unspent ARPA funds that have, that y'all will probably already have exhausted here pretty soon, if you haven't already. And page 20 is the government-wide statement of activities. And the last couple of years, too, I've kind of read through this. But just to point out, you can see on the far-left column there, pension expense. You'll see it for the fund statements and the proprietary, but really, that's also the impact of the GASP 68, what that accounting pronouncement was, that we have to record the liability, and there's some additional expenses that show up on the financial statements. Those are on the government-wide statements. They're not on the fund statements. But there's a ton of detail about this. I think it's note seven later on, if you ever want to read through that. But moving on, the governmental fund financial statements begin on page 21. And then the proprietary fund statements are on page 25. And the notes of financial statements start on page 30. And really, just a couple of notes there. You can kind of see the city's summary of capital assets on page 39 through 40, kind of gives a good rundown of additions, any disposals, and the end-of-the-year balances. Page 41 summarizes the long-term debt for the city. And page 43 kind of gives some additional information on debt, including the principal and interest payments that are forthcoming. Some supplementary information, actually, the pension liability is broken out, historical kind of 10-year deal there. In the supplementary information on page 52, you can kind of see what it's done over the last 10 years. And then whenever you spend over 750,000 in federal expenditures, you do have a single audit that's a part of your financial statements, and that is on page 58, kind of summarizes the city's federal expenditures for the year. There's some additional reports on compliance and internal control that start on page 62, but everything was very positive in those areas, no issues. But overall, it's a very solid report, and I think it's a testament to Pam and Ed. They work hard. They get us information quickly. Never have any issues there. They do a good job. And the rest of the staff as well, so we always appreciate that. But that's it. I know it's kind of quick. Were there any questions that you have?
Do any of the board members have questions?
I just had one question. On page 43, it talks about a deficit fund. Can you kind of talk about that, what that is?
I think one of your funds had a deficit fund balance. That's where there's been more expenditures reported in that fund than revenues over time. I think it's a smaller...
Ninety-two thousand.
Ninety-two thousand. I'm trying to remember what fund that was. Let's see.
The General Obligation Debt Construction Fund?
I think that's right. And that's a disclosure we have to make whenever a fund balance does have, you know, more expenditures than revenue in there. I think that's been on the books for a while.
I think that was the last ninety-two thousand left from the $5 million bond issue from way back. And then we spent it as part of the animal shelter construction, if I'm remembering correctly. Ed, does that sound right to you?
Yeah, that's correct.
And that might be something...
It's just been sitting there in a holding pattern for a lot of years.
Might have to clean that up or something at some point, and try to look into that a little more carefully, but that's what that's related to.
Any other questions or concerns, comments? Any questions from the public on the audit? If not, is there a motion to accept the audit as presented?
Motion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
We look forward to starting on the next one tomorrow.
That's right.
Ed, very sick.
Ed and Pam, I want to thank both of y'all for all your hard work. And Ed, I want to thank you for all the extra hours. Many of you don't know it, but I very often get emails from Ed at 5:00 in the morning. And that's just, he's up here working on that thing all the time, trying to get us caught up, and I think we're just about there now. So thank y'all.
I thank the board, and I thank yourself, Mayor, for everything, all the support I've gotten, the one-on-one conversations that we had early in the beginning. And it's been my privilege to get this current. The board is very supportive, and I appreciate that. And they always check with me to see if I need anything. And I guess the other part, I appreciate the compliments, but the departments, sometimes I've asked them for things that they probably don't know why I'm even asking, but they have always been supportive, all the departments, police, fire, planning. Can't do enough, say enough about Pam and Julie for giving me the information. So the recognition to get to where we are today also needs to be recognized by the department heads and their staff. So I'm very appreciative, as well as to Michael and his team to help us get here. Yes, now that the board approved it, we will start on fiscal year '24 next, tomorrow. So hopefully, I'll start coming in at 6:00 now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Item 11, it goes along with this, it's the approval to publish the public notice of completion of the FY 2023 audit. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And that motion passes. Item 12, also, if you would come up, is PL 1871, Delta Landing Commercial Subdivision, Phase Two.
Yes, sir. This is PL 1871. The request is for a final plat approval for the second phase of a commercial building in Delta Landing. This is the downtown piece that was in the front portion towards Mackinville of the PUD. On the third to last page of your staff report, you can see an idea of where this building will be in relation to the development plan overall. Civilian's here tonight representing the application. There's a brief background of how we got here tonight, with the rezoning approved on March 7th, 2023. The bulk requirements you see in your staff report match the PUD, and restrictive covenants have already been filed that, on this entire commercial piece, that match all the conditions in the PUD text. With that rezoning approved in March of 2023, that served as the preliminary plat, and so the final plat you see in front of you does substantially conform to the plat that was filed with the PUD, as you can see on that map in the back of your staff report. This was heard by the Planning Commission at our last meeting and recommended for approval unanimously. The proposed motion does include the same conditions as the last commercial building with Phase One, and it does match the PUD text that was previously approved. Mr. McBride and a representative from Civilian's here tonight, and I'm available if you've got any questions.
Are there any questions for Austin? Mr. Carrington, want to speak?
I'm here with...
Oh, yeah. I was looking for him. I didn't see him. Okay. Did you want to say anything, or?
If I have any questions, I know.
Any questions? If not, can I have a motion?
Motion to grant final plat approval for a Delta Landing Commercial Phase Two, consisting of one commercial lot of 1.11 acres west of Mackinville Road and south Pleasant Hill in Section 31 Township, two south Range Seven, based upon a finding that submitted final plat generally conforms to the requirements of the city's code and ordinances, subject to the following conditions, 1 through 10.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Item 13 is the end-of-the-year update from the Police Department. I think Assistant Chief Lanfair is going to present tonight. We gave Chief Ellis a vacation. That was good timing on his behalf, wasn't it?
He knew what he was doing. He needed glasses, you see? Yeah. Yeah. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this is our 2024 recap. This is really, for us, an opportunity to highlight what our men and women have done throughout the year, some of the community events, and then the work that they put in as far as continuing to reduce our crime in the city. So we'll go through some things, some slides real quick. Some of our community events that we do, we do Young at Heart and the Wesley Meadows event every year. We did that again this year. The A Fair, we went out there and, thanks to Alderman Miller, we cooked, I don't know how many hamburgers, quite a few. Wonderful day to be out in the...
Done.
They are, I hope. But it was a fun day to be out and interact with the community that day. National Night Out, that's another yearly event we do every year. We did that this past year in October. It's really an opportunity for the men and women of the Police Department and Fire Department to get out and interact with the community. A little bit of show and tell with the kids, a lot of the moon bounce, and some of the activities they have out that day is a lot of fun. Shop with a Cop, another event that we do each year. That's a really good event for us to be able to get out and spend some time with a lot of the kids, a lot of underprivileged kids that were out, and able to give them a good Christmas. One of the, that's probably my favorite event throughout the year. We always have a good turnout. We're very fortunate to have our officers come out and participate in that event. Earth Day, another event that we do each year. Dickens of a Christmas. We really enjoy that event, just because of the outfits. I know a lot of y'all participated in that event throughout, during the holidays. Fill the Cop car, that was, this past year was the first year that we've done that event. We had a really good turnout. We'd like to thank the members of the community for turning out. Were able to raise some money and get a lot of supplies for a lot of kids that aren't as fortunate to be able to get that stuff. The Fire Department, Police Department Kickball Event, I just want to point out, I wasn't present for that. So I'll give them their props while I'm here. That was a fun event, from what I hear. So this past year, we added an SRO to bring our total to seven. We will be adding another one this upcoming year. We think that our SROs do a phenomenal job in the schools with our youth, building that bridge between youth and the Police Department. They do a phenomenal job. Tons of events that our SROs and a lot of our officers and dispatchers come out for throughout the school year. That was Build a Bear from the elementary school. We have quite a few events. Our SROs stay really busy within our schools, doing different things throughout the year. So this is something that we started this year. What we've done is, E-Sight is a free software that's provided to us. So we, what we've done throughout, or started to do with our officers on the street is, we have mobile scanners on those laptops. So instead of officers, it's a really good officer safety tool for us, because we don't have to sit down and look down to write a ticket. We actually just scan it with that laptop right there, and it'll populate the ticket. So it's really, it's a really good tool for the officers, and we're in the process doing some cleanup. Ms. Cassie with the Court Department, getting our statutes in line with what is provided by E-Sight. So eventually, we won't have to do handwritten tickets at all. Basically, we'll basically just send them to the Court Department, and that'll be a really good tool for us. For officer safety, it's a game changer, and it's a more efficient way of, for the officers to stay out there patrolling without stopping and looking down constantly. New officer training program, this is something that we implemented this year. We've had a few classes go through, and what we've done with this program in particular is when we bring in a new hire, we don't, used to in the past, we would take them, put them in a car with a field training officer, but that's a pretty hectic environment to learn in. So to turn, to have a shorter turnaround and less stressful on our new hires, basically, what we do is we bring them in, and they go through a six-week class, where we go over our policy procedures, statutes, report writing, officer safety, use of force, de-escalation training. This has been, this has been a game changer for us. What we're seeing is, is less stress on the, on the field training officers, when, once they move into the car, and a better understanding on the part of our new hires, is what we're trying to do at the Hernando Police Department. So this has been, this has been a really good program for us. The license plate readers, so the, we had a Homeland Security Grant this year that we, or last year that we applied for. We were able to get four license plate readers. I know a lot of people in the community, a lot of times, will ask about these things. We don't just get on there and monitor information. This is strictly for, when we have, if we were to have a burglary, we can look and, during that timeframe, and kind of narrow the focus down to a list of suspects. So this is a really good investigative tool, and it starts with our early warning system of potential threats coming into our community. So these are very good tools. We've, we've been able to solve a lot of, a lot of crimes with these things, and also, you know, alerting us to potential threats, violent persons, if that is attached to that tag, we'll know as soon as they come into the city. So these are really good tools for us. Some of our numbers, this past year, we had a slight decrease in calls for service, so that's a good thing. Vehicle accidents, we went up a little bit, about 7%. Every year for the past probably 10 years, we've seen a pretty steady increase in the number of motor vehicle accidents, ever since the city kind of took over Interstate 55 and Interstate 69. So we've seen a pretty significant increase over the years from motor vehicle accidents. Auto burglaries, we saw a decrease this year. 2022 was a very, very big decrease for us. And each year, we've been able to decrease the number of auto burglaries we've had a year. So we're doing really, really well in that area. Disturbances, this is something we've seen an uptick in. Again, with growth in the community, more people moving in, that number's just going to continue to go up, but those are things that, you know, we're responding to. So we've seen a 13% increase over, over the past year from 2023 to 2024. Traffic stops, we saw a slight decrease this year, where citations went up. So we saw a little less than 1% decrease in the number of traffic stops that officers conducted in 2024 from 2023. We saw an increase of about 6% number of citations issued from 2023 to 2024. Arrests are up 11%. So what these numbers, and DUIs are down 5%, but what we're seeing from our statistical data that we pull at the Police Department is, is we're seeing an increase in what we call proactive arrests. We're getting criminals off the street before they can commit crimes, so we're seeing a decrease in our crimes continuously over the past three years. Our numbers are coming down, our arrests are going up. So we increased 11% in the number of arrests from 2023 to 2024. DUI arrests, again, down 5%. This is our felony-related cases, so SID does a majority of our, or they do all of our drug investigations, felony drug investigations. We saw a 20% decrease in the number of drug cases worked. That's not a bad thing. So that's, that's kind of like our DUI stats. We want those numbers to begin to come down over time, and that's what we're seeing is. Our CID Division, that's our Criminal Investigations Division, we've seen a significant increase in the number of felony crimes that they've investigated from 23, 2023 to 2024, 27% increase. So that is a pretty significant increase. Any questions from the mayor board?
All right.
No, we made a statement. No, I just said y'all have done a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
I mean, Alderman, Alderman Robinson, on Friday night, we were there to see all of it. So I was recognized by the Hernando High School basketball team, and that was very well, you know, noted about their professionalism and how they is making impact in the school. So it's been noted, and they was recognized on Friday night at the school.
Our SROs do a phenomenal job. And honestly, while I'm up here, all the men and women at our Police Department, they make us look good, and we greatly appreciate them and y'all. Thank y'all.
And we all appreciate you. If you would make sure all of your staff know how much they're appreciated.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for the report. Next is the end-of-the-year update from Animal Control Director Jessica Green. See if you can talk into the mics, so everybody can hear you at home.
I don't want talking in me. How does this work? All right. So we'll start. Here's our staff. We got a new kennel tech from last year, Bennett. So we have two full-time kennel techs, one ACO officer, we're running an ad for another one, and then myself. That's one of the puppies that, we had two German Shepherds come in, she had 12 puppies. And five of them were born stillborn, and we have one left, which we have several applications on them, but a rescue pulled them from us. I didn't want them having puppies in the shelter, and it was a lot, but we have that one left. This year, we started our spay and neuter clinic, Pet Works, paid for it all. We did 20 animals. That was a very good day. We've got them in cages in the hallways, in isolation where they were recovering. And to the right, that's Pet Works with Mayor, and Scott, and Trina, myself. We did Dogtoberfest for the first time. We did really well at that. You guys just approved for us to be able to do another one in April, so we'll do an Easter one with the car show. And then we did our second annual stocking drive, where we took in donations, every animal got a stocking and filled it up with treats and toys and things. We started our surgeries at the shelter, spaying and neutering small procedures. Dr. Waldrop and Dr. Tucker, we do surgeries every Thursday, and vetting usually on Wednesdays or Thursdays. We'll have surgeries this Thursday, I think we've got 15 on the books. So we've got, we're pretty busy. Donations throughout the year, a bunch of supplies, treats, people donate to us. These two young ladies at the bottom, she is Ms. McNoya, Teen McNoya, so she has to do volunteer work. She volunteers at the shelter. And then the little girl next to her wanted to collect donations for her birthday, so she brought it to us. And this is her second year doing that. Our volunteers, they help bathe animals, help clean, they walk them, they have playtime. This young lady in the middle, she's there every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from 8:00 a.m. till 5:00 p.m. She's going to go to vet school next year, so she's getting her volunteer hours in. Our canine consultant, they still are training our dogs. They trained eight... They trained eight this past year. He has two right now. He's training. He, if it weren't for him, we wouldn't get a lot of them out. I mean, he's, we're very grateful for him. We still volunteer once a month, every third Saturday at Wesley Meadows for about three hours. These ladies enjoy it. They're sitting at front waiting on us when we walk in the door. The events that we've done, Farmer's Market, A-Fair, Hernando Community Support Night, Wesley Meadows, National Night Out, then the Dogtoberfest. So last year, we had 161 animals adopted, reclaimed, or transported. This year, we had taken in 225. We have adopted, reclaimed, or sent to sanctuary, 180. We vetted over 300 animals. That's with some of them that have been there for a while that we just have to keep them updated. We went to court eight times on some cases. We have two cases pending and three owner surrender for animal neglect. Heartroom treatment, our 501(c), three hearts for Hernando animals. They've treated nine dogs. The past year, we have four pending. We'll start on the next couple of months on those. Right now, we have 22 dogs, seven cats, four dogs in isolation, four dogs in foster, and currently, we're catching four more right now. So we stay pretty busy. All of our cages are full. You can see in the top picture, we've got some cages still out in the middle. We're full. Our calls, we received over 500 calls this past year. We responded to 80 after calls from dispatch, from traffic stops. We still are on science diet. That's working out fine for us. These dogs are very healthy and I truly believe it's because of this food that we're having to give them. We don't see any problems with them, upset stomachs or anything like that. The plans for the year, we're going to do another vendor day car show. We're wanting to do a golf tournament. We want to add another play yard. This trailer here, I would like to purchase, raise enough money to purchase that. That's why we're doing so many fundraisers. I truly believe if we were able to purchase this trailer, it'd help us with our adoption events. Instead of putting them in cages, each individual compartment, kind of like the county does, where the inside, you can walk in and you can pet them in their own little area. It's around $60,000. So we're going to raise money until we can get it. We'll have several spay and neuter clinics starting in the next couple of months. We're probably going to do at least three to four of them with Pet Works. So they pay for it all. The community, they come in and they pay, I think, $20 to $40 to get them spayed or neutered, and then Pet Works will cover the rest. Basically, we'll do the surgeries at our shelter and house them until they're able to wake up and go home. It was very successful last time. We'll continue training all employees. Every employee had training this past April. So we'll do another one around May. And then we'll continue to be involved in the community with adoptions, fundraisers, doing community service, community service workers, and with our schools. And then our missions to protect and advocate for all animals. So that's it.
Good job.
Do you have any questions for Jessica? I do have a comment. You can keep, you can go ahead and turn your thing off. I've been up there many, many times since y'all allocated the money and we built this nice shelter. And I don't think I've ever once told Jessica I was coming, but every time I'm there, that place is as clean as a kitchen. So your asset is being well taken care of. Jessica, you and your team deserve a round for that. So thank you. If nobody else has anything else, we'll move on to the end-of-the-year update from the Court Department. Cassie, you going to start off? It looks like you brought everybody with you.
If I've got to do this, everybody's got to do it. Hit slideshow. And then from beginning, yeah. There we go. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Oh, there you are. I thought I had to, I didn't know if Judge Emerson was going to make it because he was in his meeting, but I have my other, most everybody here with me for support here. If anybody's got any questions for them later. But this is, I'm sure all of y'all have been in our courtroom here. This is kind of an agenda, what I'm going to go through, just some high points. As y'all know, Judge Nowak retired and the appointments of Judge Emerson and Judge Morris, some new hires, the rest of my court personnel. The program that we're starting to work with, Hernando High School, some new court processes, our ticket numbers collections, and some plans for our future. Basically, y'all know that Judge Nowak retired after 25 years. Very sad day, but very excited for him, moving on his new adventures. I'm going to get through this kind of quick because this weather out here is kind of bad and I want everybody to go home. Judge Emerson sworn in here as our city senior judge now, after the retirement of Judge Nowak. And then we sworn in Judge Morse as city judge. Very excited about those, both. This is my newest two hires, Melinda. She was actually the court clerk in Coldwater. She had worked there for three years. Very small little town. All y'all know Coldwater, but they only had court once a month. So some of her, that she's getting to us now, it's like, wow. You know, she's like, y'all really are a lot busier than what I thought. Amy, she was, we hired Melinda in October. Amy, we got in November. She was transferred from the Police Department Dispatch. So she's giving us a little bit of input on how dispatch works and that side of it. So both are bringing good knowledge, new ideas. So very excited to have them. This is some of my other clerks. Jennifer, she's here. Susan is here. Jennifer's been with me since October 15. Susan has been here since June of 21 and hope they continue many more years. City prosecutors, Paige and Russell. Public defenders, Clay and our newest one, Robert, as we call Baby Clay. I had to say that. This is the Hernando High School work program I spoke of. I'm working with Ms. Houston. She's with the DeSota County Workforce Development Program. Couple of years ago, we had a young lady by the name of Jasmine. She applied for the program and she got accepted. And they go into a field that they're interested in. And she chose criminal justice, so she got to work with us for 100 hours. And the program she was in actually paid her for those 100 hours. So this is Kirsten, I can't say her first name, Kersten Neville, she goes by Neville's. She's, right now, she's a junior, but she shadowed us for a day and she wants to go to that program next year when she becomes a senior. And if she continues, then, and if she's accepted, I hope to get her back for those 100 hours. Very nice young lady there. She was very excited to come see us. This is one of our programs we've kind of started, what'd he say, three or four months ago? What we're calling basically is an auto extend program. Basically, when somebody's just reporting back to court on court fines and they just have to make a monthly payment, they can come in and pay it before their court date and then we're going to move it out a month. And then they come in before that next court date, we're going to move it out a month again. So they don't have to come to court, just to sit in court, run our dockets up, just to make a monthly payment and get another court date. And we're doing that as long as they're up to date on all their payments, they're not behind, you know, no new charges or opinion, they're just simply court fines that they owe, which that helps them, you know, from having to take off work. We have a lot of people say, well, I got to leave, I got to go get my children off the school bus, things like that. So we're seeing a lot of people take advantage of it. And I'm hoping that more will take advantage of it as they learn about the program. Some of our tickets and our arrests, I put 22 on here just so you can see the ups and downs for the last several years. But from '24 to '23, our tickets were up 16%. Our arrest was up 46%. This time last year, we're down in our ticket numbers, but that's only as of January, which I don't have quite all of that information in just yet. But our arrests are up about 6% from what I've got entered so far. Our collections, they're steadily going up every year. As of this time last year, we're up 19% from what our collections was at this time last year. Our court collections, we got with AMS, our collection company, turned over a big group of files over to them. We're doing a little bit, not a lot, but I'm hoping as I can get more files over to them, they do all the skip tracing and try to hunt these people down, we can get these collections paid. They're way outstanding. It's hard. I mean, they move from here to here trying to track them down. Phone numbers change, they send letters, they just, it's like they disappear. Can't find them. As Chief Lanfair told you about the E-Site, been working with the Police Department Admin, Stacy, trying to get our codes corrected and matching with the E-Site codes. So that way, these tickets can start being just directly uploaded into our software. No delay in it. I mean, we're going to have it every morning. I'll come in and just upload them and we have them. We just got to kind of go through each one of them and make sure it's not a second or a third offense or something like that, make sure all the information is correct. But it will save a lot of time entering the tickets because it's already there. We just boom, upload and move a lot faster with stuff. Our court software, I will say, I've been playing around and researching new software. I've spoken to several companies, like when I go to my conferences, the vendors there. I've demoed several different ones, some are good. Some just don't have what we need or could provide what we want, more or less, to make our court run faster and, you know, be efficient for us. There's a couple that I'm very interested in, but I'm still just playing around with different technology and the different processes and stuff that are coming out. And most of the software now is all web-based, which makes it easier for us, even for the judges or the prosecutors, when they're having to talk to defendants doing initials, they can actually look in their case and see what their history is instead of relying on, hey, calling me saying, can you tell me what's going on with this person? They'll be able to look at it a lot better. But I'm just trying to look and see what's available, just keeping in mind what's best for the department and what we're wanting or what we need to make our process faster as far as well, what's something that can fit into our budget. Some of our future stuff and some of my court personnel may want to input on some of this. By October, we have to have all of our computers updated, so we're in compliance with the Windows 11. I've got five that need to be updated and one will be a brand-new station for my new hire. So that'll be a six total. And I think Ed was supposed to be getting a new updated list just to make sure, but I think it's going to be six. We've been in the Gale Building since April of 2008. This April will be 17 years. We've not had anything major done except the heat and air unit. We had to have heat and air. I did replace the girls' chairs because they were getting a little rough, I think two years ago. But we really would like some maintenance. Courtroom painted, the lobby painted, the walls just are horrible. People leaning on them and chairs scuffing them. The carpet is still the same, what we've had since 2008. It just, we need maintenance. That's something that we can talk about in our budget coming up. It's awful. We've got to look into some expansion space. We, some of our court dates have been huge. I don't know if y'all have driven by there and seen the line out there. It's awful. I made a calendar for the officers, kind of adjusting, like if you work this day, use this court date. If you work this day, use this court date. Trying to spread it out because it was like they were only, it seemed like one month they were using the same court date. So this week, we would have, you know, 700 cases, then the next week, we would have 200 cases. So I don't know what the problem was, but I made a calendar for them to use. I'm hoping that will stretch it and make it more level. But on certain days, I mean, we just were overwhelmed and we have to have a third prosecutor to help out, you know, move it. I mean, if we didn't, we would be there till 8:00 and 9:00 o'clock. I mean, and they're going as fast as we can. So just some of the things that we'll be discussing coming up in our next budget, hopefully, maybe we can look at that. Either remodel what we have to accommodate something or I'm not sure what we're, how we can do it. And I'm going to let Paige talk about that if she wants.
Speaking on her side as far as the prosecution side.
It is a significant problem. It is not unusual for us to have 300, 400, 500 people there. Safety, they each have to come through a metal detector. We have to check them in so we get the files pulled and such. They're standing out in the cold, the rain, the heat, and they are agitated and aggravated when they get in there. It is honestly a safety concern. In fact, last week, it was pouring down rain, so we were shoving them on the front porch and they got into a big fight, so the officers had to run out there and stop. It is an absolute safety concern. One of the things that I think we had talked about at one point is if the next to us, I think it's the voting people.
County election commissioners.
Those people. I don't know if they're moving or not, but boy, if they would.
They're trying. They've got to find some space and some money to move.
That would be great because we could at least accommodate the people in the room. Russell and I sit beside each other. I mean, we're as close as I and I are now. And so I'm talking to a defendant, he's talking to a defendant, he gets loud, I get loud. And it just, we've just outgrown the space to the point that it has, to me, it's a safety concern.
When we all moved into that building, and I think the Police Department moved in in 2006 and then everybody else moved in in 2008, we thought we were in heaven because they, y'all were, everybody was in this building before.
I sat right there and Kenny sat right there beside me.
But just that quickly, we've outgrown it.
It's crazy.
Yeah, we're cognizant of it and we'll be working towards those things in the budget.
Perfect. Thank you, guys.
Y'all just tried to get a little jump head on budget.
Judge, did you want to say something?
Well, I didn't know if Ms. Cassie was done.
That's pretty much it. If y'all want to say anything else.
And I'll keep it really brief. I really just wanted to come up and thank all of you for the privilege of being able to serve in this capacity. It's really, it's an honor for me to do it. And as y'all know, my family has been here forever. I've been in Hernando all my life and I take a lot of pride in what we do and want to keep Hernando safe for all of us to do my part, however small that is to do that. We've got a wonderful, wonderful staff. I've practiced in every court around here. You're not ever going to find a better court clerk than Cassie. She does a fantastic job. Bringing Judge Morris, Bob Owen, was wonderful. He's done a great job. I appreciate you guys hiring him. You won't find a better prosecutor than Paige Williams, who's maybe the longest-tenured town employee at this point or close to it. Clay may have. And then Russell is there as well, so. We all take a great deal of pride. Russell does a fantastic job. We all take a great deal of pride in our job and we try to make it, and do the best job that we can. We treat everyone with dignity and respect that walks through the doors until they give us a reason not to. And just to echo a little bit about the space, I do see that as our most pressing need. And more than anything, that has to do with just getting everyone in the door. We can move through the cases. We do it every week. and, you know, every once in a while, we'll have a, a really heavy day, but otherwise, it's more of just a concern of just trying to get everybody in the door, because when it's like tomorrow, potentially very cold and icy, or when it's extremely hot, it's just, it's tough on people to stand out there for a long time. So, anything we can do on that would be great. Otherwise, I think they covered everything.
Okay.
Well, you know, y'all said, you know, just for a quick fix, you know, you, you should be talking to that young gentleman right there, on Wednesday, that you, you have space there that can be utilized to move people. So, I mean, we got some, we got some thing there, something, thinking outside the box. We might not have to, you know, something we got available that ain't being used can be utilized during that period of time, then come right back up the hallway. I mean, it's, it may, it's, it's, there's some things there we gotta be very creative, and y'all already created anyway. I just throwing that out there, you know?
We talked this, this afternoon.
Yeah, okay.
Tried to use that, which we have in, in the past, but now we are trying to, like, every Wednesday, if we, if we need it, we've got that addressed.
You know, it, it could be, it could be scheduled, you know, I just like, right now, we schedule the thing out. That could be scheduled for October on a Wednesday. It could be a calendar event, and then no cost to you.
I don't know, the Parks Department might charge you a little bit. Thank y'all for what you do to the entire team. We do have a very highly respected court in the state of Mississippi. I know y'all have a thankless job, but it's a necessary job, and it's part of our public safety team. We appreciate all y'all.
Thank y'all for the support.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Cassie. All right, we'll move on to item 16, Joe Frank, the approval of the Hernando Parkway Water Plant Improvements ARPA Project Change Order, and the amount of $20,568 from Cleveland Construction.
Okay, there's several things we need to do to refurbish.
I think it was a drinker.
I think I get that.
I can hear one there.
It might be loud, so...
Okay, you hear me now? That is better. Again, we, uh, needed to spend some funds on replacing some, the chemical feed lines into the three aerators. Like I say, one was included in the original bid, the other two aerators, the lines needed replacing, and we did a lot more insulation, upgraded all of that at the plant, and we replaced the water line that leads from the oldest well, that was done back in the 60s, replaced that line that feeds water from the well into the aerator. That was kinda where that extra money went.
Any questions on approving the change order? Is there a motion?
These repairs had to be made 'cause they were, they weren't visible, or they just, the repairs had, the repairs had to be made 'cause they just weren't visible or part of the original scope of the project, or what?
It always had, always had some problems with the soda ash lines stopping up, so that over a period of time, we put in, actually, we put in a bigger line this time to keep that from happening.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, no. The motion passes. And along with this is item 17, which is the approval to pay Cleveland Construction's invoice totaling $179,880.50 for Hernando Parkway Water Plant Improvements ARPA Project.
Motion.
Second.
So, motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, no. That motion passes. Okay, item 18 is the approval to accept the lowest and best bid of $2,546,810.65 for the reconstruction of Mackinville Road, MPO Project, and the number is listed there on your agenda from Double T Construction LLC. Everybody, Joe Frank, would you say that that is the recommendation?
I think so. Double T's gotten jobs with us before, so I certainly would recommend the lowest bidder there.
Okay.
It's a big difference from what we were thinking.
So, that's gonna save us a little bit of money over what we had budgeted, which is good news for us. Any questions on that one? And Austin, if you would, could you just walk us very briefly through where we are in the process? Because I know we're all working towards a late July school start date now.
Yes, sir. So, tonight, with, tonight's vote would award that bid to lowest bidder. You had mentioned maybe a special call meeting to turn those minutes around for that approval.
So, as, as part of it, we've gotta get a certified copy of these board minutes to MDOT, and we don't wanna give them any reason to slow down. So, either Thursday or Friday, depending on the weather and how quickly Pam can process these minutes, I will call a special meeting just to ask y'all to approve the minutes of this board meeting, so we don't slow the project down. And it can be done via phone or something in person, whatever we decide to do.
So, that'll put us in mid-March, and then just to proceed with the contractor, a pre-con meeting the week of the 24th, and then begin construction on April 1st, which would be in line with our timeline to be done in July. So, big thanks to Wagner, just publicly, that they've really moved quickly on this project and has been a big reason why we're at where we're at today.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, no, and that motion passes. Item 19, approval for reduction of letters of credit, Montclair Phases 4, 5, and 6. Joe Frank, could you briefly state those? I know y'all had a meeting with the developer.
Okay, I think in talking to Austin, four probably should have been taken care of a little while ago, so... Then on Phase 5, my letter of January 21st had an $80,000 bond that need to keep up. Since then, their maintenance bond has been over a year, so that could have been released. We've checked them out on their sidewalks, and they had a little bit to do, and they have finished that. And then we noticed in one of the letters, the original construction letter, it was recommended by one of the board members that we keep a small bond on Scott Road while they were building Phase 4 and 5, so I think we talked about just releasing, releasing the bond on 5 also, 4 and 5.
So, you're saying we don't need the 80,000 amount anymore? We can go ahead and just release totally?
Yes.
So, release 4 and 5.
Not 6?
What about 6? Yeah. What about Phase 6?
Phase 6, all right, that's coming next. We still need a bond on Phase 6. What are you showing on, on yours?
$40,000.
$40,000.
$30,000 for the maintenance bond for street pavement, and $10,000 for the cost of, of the list of the minor things in the subdivision.
That's right. It's just minor things. One of your maintenance bonds is the biggest, biggest thing on the asphalt.
So, basically, this, this, as we can clear things up and make it simple, so basically, what you asking for, that, that everything be released in Phase 4 and 5, and that Phase 6 remain?
Phase 6 needs a maintenance bond and that $40,000 bond.
So, we're reducing for Phase 6. It's probably higher than that.
We need to...
And what about, what about Phase 7?
Yeah, Phase 7.
7's still under construction.
Yeah, they were just attached with that.
Okay, so that bond amount should stay where it's at.
So, you're asking that $40,000 remain in Phase 6, that's the...
That's right.
So, I guess the motion would be to release Montclair Phases 4 and 5 and reduce the bond amount in Phase 6 to $40,000.
Yes.
Any questions on that?
Make a motion to release the bond on Phase 4 and 5, and that the Phase 6 remain at $40,000.
Second.
So, motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, no. That motion passes. All right, item 20. As I mentioned earlier, in item 18, we came in a little bit under budget, and we'll have some extra money, and it was brought to my attention that we had all discussed that at some point, we needed to do something at Mackinville and Green Tea. It seems that we still have a lot of wrecks there. It's just generally kind of an unsafe situation. We had sent a letter to MDOT in the past, and they kind of tell us what we can do with that intersection, because it's so close to the ingress and egress from their interstate right of way, and they were pretty emphatic that they wanted a roundabout built there. We did go through a process of trying to get federal highway funds. Mitch Turner tried to help us with that, and Federal Highway said, no, this did not fit their, their process or their criteria for engineering it themselves. So, that means we'll have to engineer it with our own funds. So, the discussion was that we talked to Joe Frank about it, and talked about going ahead and starting the engineering and getting it ready for bids, and moving forward to see if we can make that a safer intersection. Joe, could you talk about that in just a minute?
Okay. They did show us two different designs. One of them has an extra lane as you come off of 269, and you're gonna take a right on Green Tea. There's an extra lane for you to go ahead and move along there.
Stay out of the roundabout.
That'll help the truck traffic a lot. And then on the opposite side, as you're going north on Mackinville, as you make the roundabout, it is an extra lane on that side. That's one proposal, and then the other proposal looks very much like Highway 51, except the roundabout area is a lot bigger. On, on both of them, it's a little bit bigger in the center section, but that's the two they recommend.
So, uh, so the, uh, what was, what was the, the cost of Old Grove and 51?
Of what now?
What was the cost of Old Grove and 51?
About 2.1 million.
2 point, yeah, about...
So, 2.1, he said, he said this area gonna be larger, correct?
It's gonna be larger, but you don't have as much drainage, much, you got, it's more like the one I'm doing on Mackinville Road and Holly Springs Road, where I just, I don't have a lot of dirt work.
And the cost of that is what?
That was $500,000.
And so, with both of them proposed, you said those have lanes, 'cause we ain't saying we're gonna, what you said, so we'll have lanes also included in that. So, what you talking about a million dollars, a million five, or two? Cost of one up now?
I don't think a million.
It's gonna be two lanes, though, isn't it?
I think so.
At Mackinville and Green Tea?
They're both pretty much the same as far as materials.
You're talking about the, when you say the both, Holly Springs and Mackinville?
Yes.
And this one we're discussing, or both?
Holly Springs and Mackinville one look very much like the 51 one, but just 51 had so much more drainage and dirt work to do, and which adds up, so. Both have about the same amount of asphalt, concrete to do. Very similar.
Looking at what, so, I guess what your proposal is, if, if not, you know, I went to handout in the center, so I, I didn't use a calculator, but it looked like an $872,326.15 difference in estimate. I think they're pretty close, though, anyway. And so, what, what you're saying is shifting that amount of money to that?
Yes, sir.
And, and how are we gonna pay for the other? How are we gonna pay for Mackinville?
Mackinville is gonna be paid for with $2.1 million from the MPO money, $700,000 from the Board of Education for the lane that they destroyed during construction, and the rest of it will be out of the city budget money. So, the $800,000 was already budgeted in the city budget, and so that would be the savings that we would transfer to this project possibly.
And so, what we need to ensure that, that all the other funding is gonna remain the same, since we did come in under, that they might not, that they might want to pull back, since it was just that $900,000. But 800, just $870,000 on the budget.
So, the MPO money is, is, is what it is, 'cause that's not gonna change at all.
Okay, so...
And the, and the school board dedicated a certain amount based on the damage they did. It really had nothing to do with our bidding. It was based on the damage that they did during the school construction, so I feel that those are both certain streams of money.
So, we get to keep all the savings, essentially?
Yeah, and transfer it to this other thing that will help the school traffic.
Right.
That's my, my way of looking at it.
Yeah.
And we did pull the other money out from roads and everything else to make Mackinville a project worth.
That's right.
So, we still...
We're using road funds, for sure.
So, we still have other roads and stuff that's still in bad shape that we pulling, that's $900,000 from, correct?
Right. We, yeah, we can spend it either way. I thought it would be good to engineer this project and then bid it and see where it comes in, reject or accept them.
My thought on this roundabout, safety, high school kids driving to school back and forth, bigger concern than, you know, a road that needs paved elsewhere.
I mean...
Let me, let me, let me, let me promise you, thought I'd, I did not say nothing about unsafe conditions with kids, okay? So, don't, don't put the narrative out there. I would just want to know about the dollars and the funding, so don't throw the narrative out there that, you know, that we jeopardizing the safety of kids to pave a road, because you got a bad road out there, that's jeopardizing folks too, for the bad road can cause accident also. If I'm not mistaken, because that's the reason we do them, because roads are unsafe. So, don't put the narrative out there about that we, that we ain't looking out for the welfare of the kids. We looking for the welfare of the kids, because we wanna make sure this happen, everything happen before the school start. I just wanted to make sure about the funding, and will, and all that funding guarantee, I think that's a good question to ask, before we move forward on anything, in my opinion.
Absolutely. And we'll, we'll re-verify those funds before we ask the board to accept a bid.
So, how long, I mean, this certainly can't be done this year, I wouldn't think.
This year?
Yeah, it could be? Okay.
That's what we're planning on.
Great. But before school? Before school? Okay.
We won't have to worry about an asphalt plant shutting down, 'cause this will be the whole asphalt season, yeah.
Okay, well, that would be great.
That's what we're planning on, unless, you know, I don't know about any property that we have to deal with, but I don't know in a couple of weeks.
So, I think what we'd like to do is, what, what we're asking is that the board just make a motion to engage the city engineer to proceed with engineering on this project.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, no. The motion passes. Thank you, Joe. Item 21 is the utility adjustments. Can I have a motion on that?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, no. The motion passes. Item 22, I need a closed determination to go into executive session regarding potential drainage litigation.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, no. We are now in a closed determination session.